Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Swanee County Board of County Commissioners meeting for February 7th, 2023. At this time, I'd like to get Commissioner Perkins and Commissioner Mobley to do the invocation and the pledge. Please stand.
Let us pray. God, I probably be coming for you this night, dear God. Lord, thank you for your mercy. We thank you for peace, your joy. We think of allowing us to come here, dear God, to serve your people, dear God, as commissioners. And God, we pray, dear God, you bless every commissioner, God. Look over their district, God. And Father, we pray, Father, look upon each one of our departments. God bless every department head and those that labor upon them, oh, God. And Father, we pray, God, that you look on these that's here, they gotta come out tonight, they gotta be supportive of this commission board. And we pray, God, you bless the heavenly Father, God, those that's in Turkey, God, that's going through this earthquake, God, look on them in the mighty way. Look on those, dear God, in Ukraine, and then look on our, because those that in the White House, dear God, those that's in every government and business, dear God, blessed in the name of Jesus. And God will give you the praise and the glory. We thank you in Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
... legislation of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God and the beautiful liberation of this world.
Moving on to item number one, approval of the minutes for the January 17th, 2023 regular board meeting. Is there any discussion or do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Land.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're gonna pull item number seven to bring back on the February 21st meeting. Also gonna pull item 10, 11, 12, and 13 for discussion. So with that, can I get a motion to approve items two through six, and eight, and nine?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Land.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item number 10, I'm gonna just read through all of these. We're gonna kind of address them all at the same time. Item 10, authorized purchase of 2023 Chevrolet Cruze Cab, 1,504, and 2023 Chevrolet Cruze Cab, 2,500. Item number 11, authorization to purchase two 2023 Chevrolet Silverados. Item number 12, authorization to purchase one 2021 Toyota. And item 13, authorization to donate user refrigeration equipment to River Oak Technical College. Mr. Fravat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On items 10 through 12, on the purchase of the particular vehicles, it didn't state in, you know, the authorization that we had here that we were going to declare each of those as a sole source because of the extraordinary circumstances. So that's all I would like to do is add that, that each item in 10, 11, and 12 be declared as a sole source purchase, and then we can rock and roll with it.
So you want us to go ahead and address those now?
Yes, sir. Address 10, 11, and 12, please.
Is there any more discussion or a motion to approve?
I move to approve items 10, 11, 12 as sole source provider purchases. Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Turning to item number 13, even though we're gonna be donating the refrigeration equipment to the Technical Center for Educational Purposes, we still need to declare the property because it does have value as surplus property, and then we can still make the same donation. So what I would like to do is have the motion added to it, one, to declare the refrigeration equipment as surplus, and then to make the donation to River Oak.
So two separate motions?
You can combine it into one, but just make sure we have surplus in there.
So can I, do I have, is there any other discussion, or can I get a motion to approve to declare as surplus and to donate?
Motion.
Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Time-specific items, at 5:05 or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold the first of two public hearings to consider the adoption of an ordinance concerning application number LDR 23-01, an application by the Board of County Commissioners to amend the text of the land development regulations by adding a definition for recreational vehicles to section 2.1, and also deleting section 4.19.37 in its entirety and replacing it with new standards. Mr. Meeks.
It's sworn in.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fravat.
Well, I would let Mr. Meeks run with that, because it's under his prerogative.
Can it be sworn in? Need it be sworn in? Pardon? No?
He says no.
I would like to have everybody sworn. If anybody out there in the audience anticipates that they will be giving testimony at the public hearing on this matter, would you please stand to be sworn? All right, if not, just the staff. Mr. Meeks, do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give before the board this evening will be the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, board members, this is LDR text amendment, LDR 23-01. This is the first of two required public hearings to amend the text of the land development The LDR amendment itself is a result of the workshops we've had in the previous months regarding RV permits. This would be the first public hearing involving that. It does not require any action of the board tonight, other than offering public comment, if there is any. The application and ordinance will come back to you probably on the 21st for your adoption. If we wanna run through the language, if anybody's got any questions on that, we'll try to address it. The attachment that's included as part of the application, the first portion there would be the installation of a definition for recreational vehicle, which would be in section 2.1. If I'll read through that, is a unit primarily designed as temporary living quarters for recreational camping or travel use, with either, which either has its own motive power or is mounted on or drawn by another vehicle. Recreational vehicles must comply with the length and width provisions of section 316.515 Florida statutes as amended, and the term recreational vehicle shall include travel trailer, camping trailer, truck camper, motorhome, private motor coach, and fifth-wheel trailer. The language there is basically word for word, almost specifically out of the Florida statutes for its definitions, and what we include for recreational vehicle permits. One thing that is listed in the statutes, it does mention park models. We address park models separately already in our land use regulations, which allows them in approved RV parks and campgrounds, and they kinda go through a different process in that there is a set-up criteria for those, and that's inspected a little differently. So for the regular recreational permits that we're dealing with, everything that you see listed would pretty well cover everything that we deal with. The second portion of that would be in the section 4.19.37. What this application would do would be deleting the existing text in that section and replacing it in its entirety by stating that recreational vehicles that have current license plate and registration attached to the recreational vehicle may be used as temporary vacation dwellings allowed on vacant land in the agricultural, one, and environmentally sensitive areas provided. And then we have a list of items there, one through nine. Owners must demonstrate a primary residence in another location. Permit shall be for the use of the owner or owners of the property, no commercial or rental use. Occupancy is limited to six months in a calendar year. Property is limited to one recreational vehicle site. No other RVs may be connected or stored on the permitted site. RV must obtain permits for and be connected to septic, potable water, and electrical service. RV permit shall be renewed on an annual basis. RV permit and any subsequent renewal shall be posted in weatherproof housing at the electrical service for follow-up inspections. And as we previously went over, this will go like a, similar to what you get when you renew your tag. It'll be a simple decal that is placed on the electrical service. RV permit shall become void when a residential dwelling unit is placed on the property. If a property with an existing RV permit issued prior to, and we got the adoption date in there of February 21st, 2023, when that language would become effective, is found to be in code violation, any previous RV permit issuance shall become void. The property owner shall obtain a new RV permit and be subject to all requirements of this section. That was our way of attempting to grasp some of the old permits that fell under the old requirements. And as long as they continue to operate how they were intended to be permitted, they're fine. But if it ends up being a code violation, then we have a means to address those.
Mr. Meeks, real quick, you skipped seven. Will you read number seven?
Okay. Seven, RV shall remain road-ready and attached to utilities by quick disconnects. No blocking or removal of axles, so it won't be permanently affixed to the property. And a lot of that language comes specifically out of Florida Administrative Code and federal Code of Regulations regarding placement of RVs in floodplains, that they be on quick disconnects and not permanently affixed to the property. The bottom portion there is recreational vehicles may be occupied for short-term durations while visiting family or friends, not to exceed 14 days when visiting premises that provides adequate toilet facilities. So we put that in there to allow for visiting family members to use an RV while they're visiting family members or friends, and, you know, they have adequate restroom facilities that are provided on-site. Then the last portion there, as mentioning all this, except that's provided by these land development regulations, it shall be unlawful to occupy, live in, dwell in, or reside in any recreational vehicle in the county. So that would eliminate the residential usage of any recreational vehicle outside of what would be permitted in this section. So as I previously stated, the ordinance that you have before you tonight is just the first reading, doesn't require any action, just an opportunity for public comment. And with that, I would enter the file into the record. Do you have any questions, Mr. Meeks?
Any questions for Mr. Meeks?
Mr. Chairman, I'll take in the entire file, and it's composite exhibit one.
Commissioner Land.
Mr. Meeks, I know that you and staff put a lot of time and effort into this. Do you think these stipulations, this amendment, will solve the problems that we're having?
We sure hope.
Okay.
I mean, it's, I mean, a lot of these regulations, some of them are not new, some of them have existed, but I think this helps in the enforcement and application behind it. It eliminates some of the gray areas. So I think that with that in place, it will be a much better situation moving forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Meeks.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President Chairman.
Mr. Perkins.
Yes. And we hear you have in the item here that only six months. What will prevent them from moving off and coming back a couple of days later, setting back up?
Well, the total occupancy is limited to six months within a calendar year. When we were doing some of this research in other counties, we noticed some other language that states that your occupancy can't exceed 180 consecutive days, which would lean to you moving an RV for one day or two days and then coming back for another 180 consecutive days. That is a total 12-month occupant, a 12-month timeframe is a limitation of six months. So it can be seasonal, it can be weekends, it could be, you know, a trip or two here and there, as long as the total occupancy doesn't exceed six months out of a 12-month period.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. One question is, what is the total amperage that they have at those little sites?
When we do a recreational vehicle permit, that's 100 amp service. Now, if people have accessory structures inclusive of that RV permit, they are allowed to submit a load calculation sheet, and it is reviewed by the building official, and they can get additional amperage to that service.
Yeah, well, that's because some have, you know, put in the building they want, making the place in state.
Now, if 100 amps will work for them, I mean, if they got a recreational vehicle, and they connect it to well, and they've got an accessory structure, maybe they're just running something as simple as lights, shouldn't have any issues. But if they have, you know, welders or other components in that, in that building that, or compressors and stuff like that, that may require more of a draw, then all they have to do is simply do a load calculation sheet and show the validity behind that need, and MAC can approve that up to a 200 amp service.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, sir.
No. I mean, Mr. Chairman, I'll just comment on kinda what Mr. Perkins, I think, was asking, which was my biggest concern, just making sure that we didn't run off any of our, I'll call them weekend warriors, wanna come and spend time on their property and stuff like that. But that's interesting, I didn't realize that they could do a calculation if they wanted to build a boat shed and have a cookhouse or some of those.
Anytime like that, you just submit your application. It's granted on the application form itself, that, you know, that would be 100 amp service. That's what we typically look for.
Yep.
But if you need more than that, you can submit that load calculation sheet, which lists all the items individually, what their draw is, and what those amperage requirements are. And if you clearly show that you're exceeding that 100 amp limitation, then you can go to a 200 amp service.
Great. But it is one camper per parcel?
That is correct, yes. And then I'll just mention, you know, in part of our workshop, we had some conversation regarding the fees involved with that. That will come to the board in a separate resolution. The fee component won't be part of the land use regulations. It'll be an amendment of the fee schedule for the Building Department, amending those fees involved with that.
So, Mr. Chairman, with that being said, I'm just thinking how I know my family and all have done, and others would probably wanna do, sell you on a piece of property. Don't have to be on the river, five acres, 10 acres out in the woods, and they come over and ride bikes, go hiking, whatever they do. If someone, if they had a friend that had another RV that was self-contained, had generator on, things like that, could they bring that in for the weekend, spend time with that family?
Yeah, that's really not a situation that we're concerned with.
Without someone getting excited about it.
You know, the issue is that that other unit is not supposed to be connected to the electrical service, which eliminates some of the manipulation of what would be inspected. But typically, if you've got somebody there for a weekend or something, or even somebody, you know, camping in a tent, you know, that unit goes away on Monday, we're fine.
Right.
You know, our concern is that you have an accumulation of these RVs being put there to clearly violate, you know, the minimum standards for residential usage, and it becomes long-term duration.
Right. Gotcha.
And at that point, it's just a code violation, then?
Correct, yes. And Mr. Crespo is present, he's here, so it would be, be him making a nice little visit to the property, and, like I said, we're here to work with people, so we'll, you know, sometimes we're not aware of the requirements. So we would be able to provide them the requirements on-site and help them to come back into compliance.
He's got a lot of visits to make, I'll like to say.
He does.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
With that, we'll open the floor to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close public comment. Any other board, just, well, we don't have to vote on this, do we?
No action of the board tonight, Mr. Sir.
So just close public comment, and that's it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 15, presentation of FEMA flood risk review.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
Members of the board, appreciate you having us here tonight. My name is Troy Roberts, I'm the Communications and Outreach Manager for the Swanee River Water Management District, and we are going to as many board meetings and town council and city council meetings as possible to keep you aware of some upcoming meetings we have later this month. They are for the Santa Fe Watershed, which you can see here. So periodically FEMA reaches out to the Water Management District, and we work together on updating our flood maps. This is done periodically, sometimes it's done every two or three years. There are certain areas within this location that's been at least 10 years since they've been updated. They're updated for a number of different reasons. Sometimes it's land development, sometimes we just have newer technology than we had the last time that we updated them. So we want to make sure that we have the most updated information available, so property owners can know what their flood risk is. This, like I said, is for the Santa Fe Watershed. The good news is, for Swanee County, there is a very, very, very small amount of the county that is impacted. However, we know that there are people who own this land and property owners, and we wanna make sure that they are aware of potential changes that they may have to their property. So we, again, have a series of meetings coming up later this month. If people cannot attend the meetings, we have a virtual event space, which I am told should be online tonight, if not by as late as tomorrow. They can actually go in here, see the presentations that will be made at these meetings, and they can actually go in and put in their property address to see if they're going to be impacted. And when I say impact, it's basically if you're in a flood zone or not. Some people who are currently in flood zones, it's gonna be their lucky day, they will not find themselves in a flood zone anymore. Conversely, of course, there will be people who are currently not in flood zones that may find themselves in flood zones. Obviously, those are the people who are probably gonna have questions and have concerns. So these meetings that we have coming up later this month, this is gonna be their opportunity to come and ask those questions, and this is the one opportunity that they will have to ask questions. So if they find themselves in a flood zone, they don't believe that's correct, we will have district representatives on hand, I know FEMA will be present, they can come ask those questions if they've, you know, lived there for 50 years, they've never seen flood impacts, that might be enough for us to go back and look at it and determine if a mistake was made, you know, or if it's just the way that it is. But again, we have meetings February 21st in Stark, February 22nd in Alachua, and February 23rd in Lake City. Again, fortunately, there's not a huge area of Swanee County that is impacted here, but again, we wanna make sure that anybody who has property, who may have questions about this, they know their risk before any of these changes are made, because obviously, with flood insurance, this day and age, any type of increase to your household budget is gonna be significant. So if people have questions about that, we wanna give them the opportunity to get answers. That's what I have. If any of you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them as best as I can.
Anybody have any questions?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Appreciate you coming.
Moving along to staff items. Mr. Norris, do you wanna do your thing now?
Yes, sir. Anything particular you wanna start with, or all of the above?
I'll let you pick.
Well, first of all, I wanna give a shout-out to Mr. Roberts here. He paid us a visit the other day at the office, and we talked about a lot of great things that we could do together as far as when we look at tourism in Swanee County, and I didn't really plan to speak about this, but as he was up here talking, I don't know if everybody realizes, because this came up in our meeting, Water Management owns a lot of property in our county and all over.
Sure does.
And I think most people have the misconception that you're not allowed to go and use that property, and that's not true. That property can be accessed, it can be used, you can do all kinds of things on it, and they're working on improving those sites and partnering with us in Swanee County on our tourism, so we can promote, whether it's hiking, or horseback riding, or, you know, he said something about monster trucks, I don't know, but... But it was a great conversation, and so it gives us an avenue when we're out promoting, you know, to people all over that now, we can link our resources. So I just really think it's something that I wasn't aware of, you know, I'd always heard a lot of these lands we couldn't set foot on, and so anyway, just wanna be sure the public knows that as well, so, and thank him for what he's doing, 'cause he reached out to us. So, anyway, thank you, sir. A couple of things I did wanna share. One of the, speaking with, congratulations, sir, our new administrator over there. And a while back, we, Chris and I at the office had had a couple thoughts on some ideas, and then I kinda, we'd run that by the chairman as well, and some of the others, and we wanted, we felt like that maybe it's a good idea to acknowledge, you know, as I call it, Team Swanee. And so, kinda coming from the board, you will see in the newspaper moving forward every week what it will be. It's called "I Recognize," and the first recipient was Rhonda Hall, who, where's Miss Betty? She's back there somewhere. And what this is, this is not an award, okay? This is not saying you're Employee of the Week or the Month or anything like that. What this program is, is get to know the people of Swanee County. And anybody in any office, any department, all of those names, we've thrown it into a big box, and we're gonna draw from that every week, and then we're gonna have a little write-up in the paper, and it's just so the public can get to know the people that work for Swanee County and what they do, and the people that work for Swanee County can share, you know, their position and where they are. So, Miss Betty's employee was the very first one, and that, this was in last week's paper, the next one comes out tomorrow, and every single week there will be. Now, it will take a while, 'cause we, with about 300 employees, I guess, it's gonna take us several years to get through. So if your name doesn't get pulled right away, please, don't hate us. But we just thought it was something that was, would show who we are and open the door of the lines of communication. You also will see, once a month will be a spotlight on business, and that's gonna be Swanee County business, both small, medium, and large, and what that's gonna look like is just, again, this, I don't want people to think that this is an award. It's not an award, it's just us introducing businesses that operate in Swanee County to the public here. And so it's just a campaign to try to get folks a little more knowledge of what we have right here in Swanee County. So we're excited about it. You should see, next, tomorrow will be another employee, and then next week we'll start the business and the employee will be running, so. And I wanna thank you guys, and Mr. Scott for supporting us on that, and you guys for supporting all the folks of Swanee County and helping to, you know, build them up in what they do every day, so. Oh, I might take that.
I think it's a great idea.
I might have to take this call. Nah, just kidding. I wanted to mention, we recently got to rundown last week, the chairman went down to FPL, put on an illumination summit, which is an economic development summit, but it's, it talks a lot about site selection, talks a lot about workforce, all of the things, infrastructure, and it's kinda things we knew, but there are some different things, and so we learned a lot, we got to build some more good relationships, I think, down there, and appreciate him going and being a part of that.
I didn't bring back anybody to hire this time.
This is the first time we haven't brought back somebody to hire or to contract with, but what we did is, we did bring back some information we wanted to share, and I just wanted to let you guys know that FPL right now, they have a program, and this is really for the general public, it's called 35 Mules. And so if you were wanting to start a business, they offer a program where you apply for a scholarship, and if it's any kind of business startup across the board, they will pay you $100,000 to get this business up and running. You go and you work at their facility, they give you people to teach you how to run the business, how to management, how to manage it, and then they allow you, to whatever area it is, to continue to research and develop and grow your product. So after going through this for a year, then they help you go out, and if it's real, if they buy in and they think this is turning into something, then they support you in pushing that and growing your business and carrying it out to the world. So you can go to 35mules.com, everybody can apply, but they just asked that we would share that word when we got back, and really is a huge program.
But if I heard that right when they were presenting that, you got to go to their facility, and you got to spend a pretty adequate amount of time at their facility, so it's not just some little part-time thing.
No, you don't.
Undertaken.
You don't work in your garage, that's right. You gotta go down there, I think, was it three days or four days?
Three or four days.
A week.
Yeah.
At their facility and work on developing whatever that is, whether you're building widgets or, you know, computers, ceiling fans, whatever idea you have, they help support that and bring that stuff in-house, and they, that $100,000 scholarship helps finance that piece for you. So we told them we'd share that, and we appreciate them, you know, doing that, so...
I told them I wished I could go, but I just can't go four days a week.
I understand.
But what a great thing for somebody that's trying to get something going. I mean, I just thought that was a really great program that they had going on for independent business, startup businesses, that doesn't really have any clue on what to do or where to go, or...
It is, yep.
I would encourage you to look into it if that's something you've got on your mind.
They also are working on a different piece, it's a site development program, which they, we were on the call with this morning, and what that looks which they, we were on the call with this morning, and what that looks like is, we can actually identify properties, and they will help us go in and do like environmental studies, they will help us, you know, with marketing on those properties, they will help us decide, you know, mitigation, all of the different components that we're looking at when we're looking at a site. Now, the tricky part is, it has to be a FPL-served property, and most of our properties, where our development is, is served by Swanee Valley, who we love. But we did reach out today and ask them if there's a big transmission line running through the property, even though it may not serve it, and may, would that help make it qualify? Because, you know, they just run that line all the way down I-10, so that would open up the door to that. So we hadn't, we hadn't got that answer yet. I was trying to let Mr. Provater, and see if I could sway this way a little bit, you know, since it runs through the property, it says, you know, if it, so anyway, we're trying, so we'll see.
But that's a pretty big deal, I mean, for them to do that, if you can get them to...
Yeah, I mean, it's thousands, thousands of dollars, and I mean, this, this, then it'll be like, what they would call like certified, and it, it just, it would be a huge deal if they, and they're doing, they're picking 10 properties in the state. So we're gonna see if we can qualify for that, and if not, we'll just keep, you know, working on it the best we can with the resources we have, but at least they're offering that program. And Duke does something similar as well. It's just that, you know, kinda most of our development, they don't really serve, they kinda serve the city of Live Oak and Welborn, so. But at least they offered, and we do appreciate that, and they took really good care of us while we were down there. So they, they, they had an event called Glow Games, and if it wasn't for that, I'd have lost the chairman, so. That's all I'm gonna say about that. So speaking of Swanee Valley Electric, our LTPT committee, Mr. Shannon, and all those folks, whoever else is on that committee that's sitting in here, Commissioner Land was chair that, and I don't know if you wanna share that information, or Shannon, or somebody, but...
Go ahead, you're doing a good job.
I wanna let y'all know, you know, we've been working hard on broadband for a long time, and, and with, with all the work of that committee, especially, you know, Shannon's such a big piece of that, and, man, there's others in here, Ms. Betty's on the committee, I'm gonna miss people, please, I'm sorry. But, you know, they, they, we, we agreed to partner, you guys approved us partnering with Swanee Valley Electric to put broadband through, you know, all the areas that they serve. That's a mighty $93 million task that they're, they're looking at. So they, along with the county, we partnered and applied for three grants through the Office of Broadband, five million each, and we got two of those. So that's $10 million towards the project, project will be built regardless, but this helps lower the cost, which then is passed on to the consumer, so it lowers that cost. And it's not to say the third one won't be funded, it just says that at this point in time, the first two were funded. So we were, we were really, and I wanna thank Shannon, and I mean, he does so much work on that broadband, and as well as other stuff, but, but that was, that was a big deal. I think if you look down that sheet of all the counties that were funding, we were pretty much only one that got $5 million for both grants, right?
Yeah.
I mean, there were a lot of 2 million, 3 million, things like that, but I mean, so we got 100%, 100%, and I'm hoping the third one will come through, so just excited, thank y'all for partnering with Swanee Valley, and the work that staff, and that whole LTPT committee, the ones that were on that, that met for months and months and months, and we could not have even applied for that funding if that committee had not been formed and did their job. So don't take lightly the piece of the committee taking time out of their day to participate in that.
And, Mr. Norris, I think that it's worthy to, you know, pat Swanee Valley on the back too, because...
Yes, sir.
You know, what a lot of folks in the public may not recognize is that not a lot of, of your private sector folks in the internet business were interested in rural Swanee County whatsoever, 'cause the, the distance between the homes where the fiber will be going is so far, wasn't, didn't fit their cost-effective models.
That's right.
That wasn't the case with Swanee Valley, and they, they spent a lot of time working their application, and $93 million is a significant investment they're gonna make in, to their service area. It's not just our county, it's Columbia...
That's right.
Parts of Hamilton, Lafayette, so it's not just Swanee County, but $10 million for that project is, is a, is a win.
And this word, while we were down there at the meeting, with, with FPL to tell you how all this, this, you know, the phone's buzzing and people are chirping, and so people at the table at these events, when you're sitting there with site selectors are saying, "Look, we just got this money to, to get broadband." So, so that word travels so quickly that we had these conversations sitting there right, right, right at the table, so. And, and one thing, and I know you guys probably get tired of hearing me preaching about it, but I'm gonna preach about it. The one thing that we, we, that's constantly driven into us, and I know it takes money, and everything does, and all these services cost us, but they're never gonna come if we don't...
If you don't build it.
If we don't build it. And, and that's what every site selector will tell you, we sat down with them, we had a lot of time to sit one-on-one and talk to these people from all over the country, and the very first thing, it's not, "We're working on it, or we're gonna do it," that doesn't matter to them. Right, Mr. Bailey? So when he gets up here, I want you to question him hard about when we're getting started. So, so the, but the thing is, it's just like the Field of Dreams, they actually played that, and for us, and said, "Listen, you know, you just gotta believe they're gonna come, because they're never gonna come if you don't build it. If you sit around and wait to try to get those companies and those jobs here, they're never coming." So we gotta initiate that, so. Anyway, I just wanna be sure that I had somebody supporting me when they're beating me up and telling me that, right, boss?
Yes, sir.
So, anyway, that's kinda all I have. Anybody got anything? Thank you guys for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Norris.
Yes, sir.
Is there any other staff that has anything? Any commissioner items? Any commissioners?
No, sir.
Mr. Attorney, county attorney items?
Yes, sir, just briefly, I had passed out earlier before the meeting, a, just a rough proposal for redistricting services. Told you I'd reached out to the consultant, and Friday evening, this is a rough agree, a rough proposal that he has provided to us. If you'll note on there that it's talking about reaching out to both the school board and, you know, the county. I've had conversations with the school board's attorney, and with the superintendent, and they will also, because they utilize the same districts, instead of having to go through their own process, they would like to join in with our process, if at all possible. So what I've tried to arrange is next week, on February 14th, Mr. Chairman, you get to accompany me to the school board workshop with regard to, you know, this redistricting, and trying to have a joint effort to approach this problem.
It's Valentine's Day, I'm sorry, I'm off.
Well, that's, it'll be at 9 o'clock in the morning, it'd be a long Valentine, anyway.
February the 14th.
February 14th. But anyway, this is just a brief outline of, you know, the services that would be provided. The process in total takes approximately 100 days, or 110 days, you know, if we stay on schedule with everything, and, you know, with the information that we previously had. The proposal includes, you know, going all the way through redistricting, however, we also have a failsafe in there that says that whenever we do the initial mapping from back then, and compare it to the current information, if the, the numbers work out, that we don't have to redistrict, there's a stopping point that we have in there, you know, as well, so we don't have to go through the full process and pay the full amount, that's just the, the way the proposal is drafted. Quite frankly, I don't think that is gonna be the case, because with the redistricting, we've had a lot of folks that have moved into the southern and eastern end of the county, where we've had our biggest population growth, and in addition, out there, the prison population is no longer counted as, as part of the population in the county, and that'll swing numbers in Commissioner Mobley's district over there, so I, I am anticipating that we'll actually be messing with, majority will be districts four and districts five. One of the things that has been raised as a concern, and it is going to be addressed when we do get over to the school board, is the, is redistricting number two. Number two, and dating back to history a little bit, going back to 1985, whenever there was a federal action filed by the members of our local community, supported by the NAACP, to make sure that we had single-member districts rather than outlawed districts. Now, that's, we have, you know, single-member districts now, and we don't propose to make any change to, you know, the single-member, single-member district way of doing things. But even going back and supporting what, you know, happened back then, and as we move through, we'll still have to comply with the Civil Rights Act numbers, and monitoring, and, you know, that type of thing, to be able to make this comply. It's not as cumbersome, you know, as it sounds, but I just wanted to make sure that the community knows that we are cognizant of that, and that we'll be addressing that as we move forward. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
That's all you got? Moving on to general business, item number 16, update on county projects, Mr. Bailey?
Good evening. I think this is the first time we've done, done this. This way. I'll just dive right in, if that's okay with the board. We'll start with the Greenway, Greenway Trail Rehab. This is the trail in the south end of the county, that was on the old railroad right-of-way, that runs from County Road 248 down to the Itchituckee River. This project was funded by FDOT. It started originally as those limits to the river, if you're not familiar with it, the, the trail ends before you get to the river, and it actually directs the, the user of the trail out on the US-27, across the river on the 27 Bridge, and then back onto the Columbia County side. There was a piece missing in there that actually went where the old trestle was. Shortly after we started the project, we had some meetings, talked to DOT, actually got funding secured to continue the trail across the river on the old trestle. Duke Energy was involved with that, they owned that, that corridor through there, they were agreeable to transfer that to the county. When it came down to actually doing the transfer, Duke Energy found out that they didn't have clear title to the property. So that put a, put a wrench in the project. DOT has requested, because we don't know the timeframe to which that issue could be resolved, that we go back to the original limits and just do what was, what was originally programmed. We've updated the plans, and we're gonna be submitting those back to DOT this month. Environmental permitting is ready to go, so as soon as DOT says we're okay to advertise, then that project will be ready to advertise for construction. I don't think, I think the department is still very much interested in connecting the Columbia County Trail with the Swanee County Trail, we just have, Duke has to get the, the right-of-way issue squared away before they can convey it to the county. So we anticipate, hopefully in the future, that we'll be able to get money to actually be able to do that, do that work.
So no, no idea on timeline on that?
No, sir. This, that's, that's in Duke Energy and the, the railroads court to, to work those issues out of ownership. The county could not get clear title to it, so if it can't get clear title to it, then obviously we can't, we can't undertake the work. Okay?
Uh-huh, good to know.
Fire Station 6, up on 129, north of the interstate, we're about 50% on the building plans. We did have a meeting with the county last week, we're making some revisions based on those meetings on orientation of the site, and, and the site improvements. Also, let you know that the connection at 129 was planned to be a joint-use driveway with the adjacent property owner, so those details are, are being worked out as well. But that's where we're at with, with that. Okay? Canrid 137 utility extensions. The construction is approximately 95% complete. We understand that the contractor's waiting on power to the lift station area, he's completed all his testing, and he's waiting on the results of those, those tests. The inspection of that is handled by the county inspector, and do we have a consultant on that?
Yeah.
And Newberry is your other consultant that handles the construction side of that. There will be some change orders, the previous manager had approved some, some changes, some of them are credits, some of them are cost increases for some added work that was added, and we're waiting on to review that data before we can get that to the board, to see what the final results are of that. And he's also working on a cost for extending the water line south across the Markham property. The Markham property is the property that's right next to the interstate in the southwest quadrant of 137 and I-10. Okay? Paving of 80th Terrace and 139th Drive. This is 139th Drive from 80th Terrace to 76th Street, and it's 80th Terrace from 139th Drive to the Public Works Facility. Total length's about 1.3 miles. It's a dirt-to-pave road, what we call a dirt-to-pave conversion. Here's a map you see of that up on the screen. We're approximately 90% plans done on that. We've identified some railroad right-of-way issues on the western end of that, right in the bottom of that V. There's a section in there that the railroad still claims ownership to, we provided that legal description information to the county. That, I'm not sure if the county has, where they're at with the communication with the railroad at this time to, to resolve that, but that will have to be resolved right now. The railroad says, basically, the county doesn't have prescriptive rights, it's their right-of-way. You know, county's position can be, "Well, we've been maintaining it, so it's our right-of-way, regardless of which way it goes, at, at best we have is just basically from edge of road to edge of road, we don't have anything to handle drainage, or anything along those lines." So that, that section right there would need to be resolved to, to us be able to finish up and be able to go to construction with that project. So that's what we're waiting on for that. Also, we have a gentleman that has bought the parcel that is in the south corner of the V, southeast corner of the V. It's a low area. He's contacted us, he's, the reason he's flooding, at least in, as far as what he thinks, is because of the airport and the road. When we look at the LiDAR data, it's a low, it's a low area, it's the lowest part in the whole area. So all the water goes that way. Gonna need some direction from the county on how you want to proceed with that. We can do some things to keep the water in the right-of-way, that is part of the railroad right-of-way that, that needs to be acquired, and possibly pipe it to the county property, which is to the west. To do that is gonna be beyond the limits of what DOT funded, so I'm not, without running that by them, I can't tell you that they would participate in that cost of that, 'cause that was, that is outside the project limits, but we can certainly, you know, ask, you know, make that ask for, for the county, so...
Does it have to be done?
Mr. Chairman, another thing I would say, that there's, there's kinda twofolds there, I'm very familiar with this, I was out by my district out there, but obviously the land owner has an issue there, but the other thing I look at, and discussions I had, like with the fire department, that is used heavily for 911 emergency vehicles, and when it's underwater down there, they can't go that way, they can't respond and make those calls. So I would love to see us try to get DOT to recognize that and understand that.
Well, we're raising the road bed up as where we can, as much as we can, I can't tell you that it would never go underwater. I, I understand it went underwater during Debbie, but Debbie is not something we designed for, that's, that's just an extreme event, that's not, that doesn't meet any sort of criteria of FEMA, that's beyond FEMA and everybody else. But we have raised it up to, to improve the condition, but the water naturally drains to, to this gentleman's property, right? property right now. That's just where it goes. So if we're going to try to control that water or keep that water off of him to eliminate the complaint, the only option that we see is to take it to the county's property to the west there.
There's already a holding pond there, if you will, when it dug out before.
Mr. Chairman, that's actually airport property, so there's a whole different set of rules involved with that also. So, but we can certainly explore that, but we have to get Bill Prang involved, they come in the layout, met the airport layout plan also, so.
Yes, we need some, we kind of need some direction on how the board wants to, you know, utilize that property or do something else.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Long, you said outside the scope of D O T's?
It's beyond the limits of the, of the, of the project that D O T funded. Basically, that black area you see, that's the limits of it, and then the county parcel that possibly could be utilized is to the west of that.
How much money are you talking about? You got any idea?
I don't. If that's an option, we can put the numbers to that and figure that out.
I think your answer will determine if it's an option or not. You're talking about a hundred thousand or 10 million?
As Mr. Scott said, that's airport property, so the airport may say it's not, not an option.
It's not airport.
My question is, is it a legal issue to the county? If we pave that road and don't do something, does it create a problem for all concerned if we don't do something with the water?
The county has an exemption through the state for paving the road. As far as a legal issue, I would defer to your legal person down there in the table. I'm just an engineer.
Natural flow of water.
Understood.
And, Mr. Chairman, I know, Mr. Bailey, the, Mr. Phat has been working and talking to the railroad. We, I don't know how far up the ladder we got yet, but he's, he's on that project as well.
So do we need to give Mr. Bailey some guidance on what to do here, or is this something?
Full steam ahead.
I'm talking about the flooding part, the water part.
Well, we, we can keep, we can control the water, I just need a place to put the water.
Which I guess we got to find out.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do some legwork on our end on that property, just to see what our options are, and I'll follow up with Mr. Bailey on that.
Yeah, yeah, we can control the water, assuming we get the railroad right-of-way. The issue is, when I get down to the intersection, where does it go then?
Yeah.
And if we don't do nothing, what happens is it just makes the corner and goes into, into this person's property, because he is the lowest point out there.
Understood.
Okay?
So, Mr. Chairman. So if you, if you don't do anything, is, does, does the, where the water naturally flows now, is the way I understand, you said to this particular, I don't know who it is, particular residence's property, if you don't, if you raise the, the road bed up high enough during a major thunderstorm, is the water, road going to be, does he have enough low spot to hold the runoff that we create by paving the road?
No.
Or is it going to be, there's going to be a lake there across the highway?
If I'm going to be across the highway, he'll, he'll have a lake in his yard.
But he's got that now, is what you?
But he's got that now.
But, but, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just, the, the decision to be made is how much, because we're making impervious area going along there that's being paved, and what additional water are we actually creating that would flow that because of the impervious nature of the pavement? To make that decision coming down. The natural flow would stay, would, you know, is, is a consideration. But again, if you're raising the road, you're taking it out of its natural flow, more directing it, I would, I would be recommending that we take a look at those numbers and, you know, we got to put it somewhere, so.
I was saying, Mr. Scott, you got to do some checking with the FAA, and you'll get by, Mr. Bailey.
Another option is you get a flood easement from the property owner, but I don't know if he's, you know, amenable to that.
What, what did you hear we said?
I said, you, you acquire a flood easement from that property owner, because that's where the water goes. You just get authorization to let that water go that way.
Well, there's, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
I think on both sides of that road, it looks like a natural, I don't know what a management would call that, but it's a.
And that's wetland, if you will. It appears to be.
There are some wetlands out there.
Yes. Is any of those, Mr. Scott, on the airport property? Do we, do we have any of those that we had to take into consideration?
Not any wetlands that I'm aware of. I mean, I know that the county's gone out there and dug some borrow pits before, and then I think they realized they wasn't supposed to, maybe.
Well, I don't know how much land's over there, but I know that's, anytime it floods, that's where we have typically pumped the water to get the road passable and accessible.
But we can get creative.
But I agree with Mr. Bailey, a drainage easement like there, right there would be, you know, would be an option. Again, just once we figure out what the numbers are on the volume.
But we can, we can calculate that, so.
Well, in, in the long run, I think trying to keep the road, I mean, I'm worried about the property owner, multiple property owners there as well, but, you know, that's a huge investment. That road, if it continues to go underwater, how long will it last, you know, before it starts coming apart again?
This project will vastly improve that situation. I said, I can't ever guarantee you it won't ever happen, because we never, nobody dreamed Debbie was going to happen either, but for anything else, it probably won't.
Mr. Bailey, on the southwest quadrant of that intersection there, that's the parcel that you're talking about, is, is the airport? The Swanee County Board of County Commissioners?
Of the west there. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, southwest corner. I mean, that's, I know it's maybe airport property, but it's on the other side of the road, the airport. You think that maybe we could be granted some type of, because, I mean, I see the aerial and the pits you're talking about that are holding water now. It being across the highway from the airport, maybe we can get some type of exemption to be able to just send the water over there?
It depends on the intent it was purchased for, if it was for retention or future development, but.
Our good friend at Water Management just left.
Why are you seeing the gum?
It's not, it's not a Water Management issue. What Mr. Scott's saying is.
Airport.
Purchased for the airport.
FAA.
And you get some FAA regulations that kick in. They don't like a lot of standing water for bird strikes and attracting aquatic type birds and stuff like that, so the arson FAA regulations.
And sometimes you can use that to your advantage by eliminating the wet spots because of the birds. So we, again, we, let us explore what our options are, so.
So, okay?
Very good.
153rd, that grows from State Road 51 to County Road 250, approximately one mile long. We've completed those right-of-way sketches back in the fall, submitted those to the county. Currently, we're working on our bid package and our permitting application with the Water Management District, is where we're at with that. 76th Street, not too far from the one we just talked about. That runs from US 90 to River Road, it's about 10 and a half miles. We've completed the survey on that. We've looked at the right-of-way width we have in there. We've got some pretty large right-of-way acquisition issues that's going to need to be addressed in there. It's very tight. There's no drainage out there, there's no ditches out there, nothing to protect the road long-term from that. So when we start having to deal with those issues and applying that to the width of the road and the amount of traffic we've got out there, we're anticipating there will be some right-of-way acquisition needed for that project to, to meet the D O T criteria and move through. And there will be some wetland impacts out there as well, so that has to be addressed, because we do have some wetlands on either side of the road, that thing's real tight as it is now. Okay? I think this is the last road project I've got, is 68th Terrace. Those pro, those plans were completed, the county did bid that out, and from Columbia was a low bidder. However, prior to them starting, there was discussions about the width of the road as far as future development out there. The original plan was to stay within the existing right-of-way and just resurface it as, as best we could through there. Now, there was some discussion about possibly getting some right-of-way from the adjoining property owners to be able to widen that, and I think that's still being evaluated at this time, as far as what the opportunity is there. So the contractor has been put on hold until that can be, be answered.
Mr. Chairman. As far as the right-of-way acquisition, is that ball in our court?
As far as I know, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, and I've been in contact with those, with those owners, and I don't want to jinx anything, but it's a positive attitude.
I hope that mojo carries over to 76th Street as well.
Well, in this particular case, it's going to be in their best interest. I mean, that don't hold up a lot of times when you're talking to property owners, but if they will see fit to work with the county, it's going to improve their, their situation out there as well.
Absolutely.
The last one, and probably the biggest one, is the Catalyst Site. Trying to keep Jimmy straight on this project is a full-time job for two or three people. Let's hand that out to the board.
Does he keep asking, are we there yet?
We've got it up on the screen, but we do have some handouts here. We can give each board member one, so you can kind of see a little bit closer than the screen, but. The Catalyst Site, currently what we have active is designing the water main from the existing water treatment plant, Project Wave. That project has a short timeframe. We've been pushing that very hard to make the county's deadlines that they have committed to with the Project Wave Company. However, once we got into it recently, we've discovered some, some stuff going on with the water plant, and I'll go over that in a minute, but right now, the water plant is the area in blue that you see on the, on the screen there. That's where the water plant is, that's the existing water treatment plant. It's to the west of 169th Street, a road, and we would be running the line from there, it would cross the railroad spur, go almost due east till we get to 169th, then we turn south, almost till we get to the railroad there, and right before that, we would turn and go due east again along the property line there, and eventually that would turn south, cross the interstate, and then cross the railroad and get to US 90. So the, the initial part of this is to get to Project Wave. You see the, the tag for it there in the middle of that piece of property there, where it would be going. What we've ran into with the water plant, we were tasked with running the water line. We initially had it as a 16-inch water main, and what we've, after digging into, start trying to look at how to master plan this whole thing, which we weren't tasked to do, but what we've discovered is that water plant was basically set up just to handle cloister, at the time, or bender holes now. What was done was there's a, an eight-inch, eight-inch or six-inch main that runs, handles potable water that goes up to bender holes. There's a 12-inch main that goes up, that's raw water, non-treated water, that they utilize for their fire protection. There is a set of pumps that handle potable water, so we have redundancy. If a pump goes down, you've got backup. The raw line that is not treated, that they use for firewater, has a single pump, and there is no redundancy on that. So if it goes down, we only got, we don't have water. In the very near future, the county's going to need to do some modifications to this plant to be able to handle the overall usage out here. And I'm, when I'm talking about in the very near future, I'm talking about just handling, just to get bender holes where we need to have them to, and to have Project Wave where they, where they need to be. At least, we need to add another pump on that raw line, so we've got redundancy in there. Even if they were to put pumps at the user site, they would have to be sucking the water through our system, through our pumping system, and it's not going to work very effectively, not the way it's set up. My initial thought right now is that we need to add that second pump in there so that we, we can handle and get, push water out the system where we need to push it out. Eventually, there's a possibility we convert both of those lines to a treated water so we can utilize them any way we want to. Where we're at presently is we think we need to run two 12-inch mains. Instead of 116, we need to run two 12s over to Project Wave, so that we have the flexibility in the future to utilize either line that we need to utilize. Otherwise, we'd have to do all those fixes right now, but because of the short timeframe, we can make that work and get them the water that they need. The pump that's there now, although we don't have the redundancy, it meets Project Wave's requirements, so we're okay there. We just don't have redundancy in our system. As this develops, it's critical that we have that redundancy out there. I mean, if, if we have something go down, and we've got how many businesses we can fit out here, and so many jobs out there, and they don't have water, then, then, you know, that's just not, not going to be acceptable to anybody out there. So that's our immediate project we're working on out there. We've been assisting Mr. Norris, we've been assisting the board as far as funding requests and trying to develop this. This concept you see here, we're working on a master plan, we'll be getting that task order to you, but we've, we've already initiated some of the studies. We've identified some things that it's pretty quick to be able to identify, that's probably going to be some needed improvements over time as we add jobs, we add companies out here. 169th Road was done as a two-lane road. It's not going to hold up to the truck traffic we're starting to see out there. We're starting to see some degradation of that road. It wasn't designed for that level of service to be able to handle that. When you do that, as a minimum, we think you're going to need to go to a three-lane section through there instead of a two-lane section. We're going to need some turn lanes out there that'll give us the ability to provide, to provide that. There's no paved shoulder out there, we need, we need to add those as well, so that would be an improvement to that. You see also, next to the water treatment plant, to upgrade that area there, that's, that's another crossing of the, of the railroad that we have. We've recently been working with Project Titan on the west side there. If that property could be developed, or as that property is developed, not can it be, but it, it will be, the, there will be a need for another access road. A logical point for that would be right there where the other road comes into US 90. We see the need in the future for possible frontage roads. As the north side develops, those are all at-grade crossings. We've already got issues out there. If the train is on the track there, we block traffic on 90, they're backing out to the main line. We see the need in the, in the future for a at-grade separation over that track, which would then bring it over 90. We'd end up with a possible configuration, it would be a, a loop that would loop back down as you come across there, so that we're not blocking that traffic. We have a, a, an at-grade separation, so that there is no need for that. We have an at-grade separation so that there is no need for that gates and arms that we have out there now. You could cross it at any time. We've identified a possible water tower out there. The advantage of a water tower, that's going to give us a more passive water supply, i.e. you let the elevation do the work for you instead of pumps. We get that elevated so that we can push water out through the whole system. The water tower floats on the system. If it's visible from the interstate, it's a great big billboard out there for the county to say Swanee County's open for business. So, there's a lot of advantages to having a water tower out there in that area. The last thing is the wastewater treatment plant. As it is right now, the county has no wastewater facilities out there. We have an area targeted for that. That was based on previous acquisition that the county acquired that property there, but no work has been done on that other than determining what kind of need we may have and trying to get some cost projections to look at funding opportunities to be able to build that in the future. But that will be needed. Back to what Mr. Norris was talking about, we've got to have the infrastructure if we're going to get the jobs and get the companies out there. I think the site is in a great location, has a lot of great visibility, has a lot of great access, has a lot of things going for it. I think the one weakness that we have right now is our infrastructure, and once we get that part of it shored up, I don't think the sky's the limit out there as far as the county for developing that property. So, that's all I have unless y'all have questions for me.
Any questions?
I do. I've got a couple.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land.
Mr. Bailey, that's a big pill to swallow there.
It is.
The dollar sign's running through my head, and it's into tens of millions of dollars to make some of these improvements. You just, probably upwards of twenty million dollars, make some of these improvements that we need to make.
More than that.
I was being conservative. One question for you, and I don't mean this in any way, but why would we have designed a main for fire protection with only one pump?
Can you answer that question? That preceded us. We didn't do that work. Another firm that the county hired at the time did that work. Speculation on my part was it was the quickest and easiest way to get water to Clausenner at the time.
And then, second question is, does our current water plant, in its current condition, have the capacity to handle what amount of growth in addition to current users? Is there any extra capacity today?
We are barely meeting the fire protection requirements of either client you have out there right now. So, anybody that came in with a larger fire demand, we couldn't meet it.
Meaning today, meaning including?
We could handle Project Wave. We could handle Bender Holtz, based on what they've told us, what their needs are. If someone came in and they required a greater demand for fire protection, we could not meet it.
What about potable water?
So, potable water, it's going to depend on what the application is. We do have some potential growth in there. The potable water use is not that high, but if you've got a company in here that required a lot of potable water, they're, right now with Bender Holtz and what I understand from Project Wave, all their potable water use is domestic-oriented, i.e. it's the employees going on bathroom breaks or, you know, eating lunch or whatever the case may be. It's that kind of usage, so that's pretty low. If someone comes in and they're doing hydroponics or they're doing some sort of process where they need water, then we could lose that pretty quick. So, as long as it's domestic, we've got room to grow in the domestic side.
Right. But the water tower situation, if we got that established, would probably give you a lot more capacity than that.
Yes.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Right now, you have two wells out there, so that part we do have redundancy on the wells. There's potential to grow that to three, four, however many wells we may need out there. So, that's there, but putting the storage, increasing the storage capacity out there would be where it's at. Right now, your potable water system runs off of a high-service pump and a hydronematic tank. A hydronematic tank is a saying, a tank for everybody that lives in the country. When you've got a well, the little tank you have out there at the wellhead or in the house, that's what it is. It's just a bigger version of it. But at these kind of, at lower usage, they work fine, but when you get, that usage gets high, then that hydronematic tank is not a efficient way to move the water in the system.
So...
Mr. Chairman.
So, what are you suggesting first we do? Put in a second pump for the fire flow and then look at the water tower?
Well, the first thing is to get Project Wave squared away. That's our first target, get that. We're going to be sending you a proposal for doing the master plan for the whole thing. As part of that, that master plan is for us to go in there and look in detail at that water plant and see what kind of condition all those parts are in, what we have and what we actually don't have, and then from that, we can determine what the next step is as far as what capacity we have left in there and what will give us the greatest bang for the buck as far as the next improvement goes out there.
Okay. On shifting gears to One Hundred and Sixty-Ninth, would Bender Holtz add in the second line? And with what you've seen out there, some degradation, how much life we've got left in that road?
Well, I mean, your road department can do some work, keep patching it, keeping it going for a while, but it's going to get exorbitantly expensive as you go along. But I would say within the next, you know, probably five, 10 years, you need to be looking at doing some upgrades out there. But five years is going to take you a little bit, take some work from our public works department to make it last.
Would you also agree, and I know it better than what we've had, they redone that railroad crossing?
Well, the rail crossing needs to be done now.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, there's some things there as we grow, and again, the state needs to get involved on that, larger turning lanes, things of that nature. Because Jimmy and I were out there not too long ago, and with the train there, they had backed up.
Well, when the county paid One Hundred and Sixty-Ninth, the rail crossing was not touched. It was the existing rail crossing.
Right.
No improvements were made to that.
That's right. And real quick, back to the water. Like you said, there's other wells, things we can tap, things we can do. I was just going to think in here when you were saying that, there's other opportunities there if we had a larger water facility, and I'm not advocating for no tower right now, but I mean, I think there's other businesses that would probably be a provider we could provide.
Well, I mean, I think a tower's inevitable.
Yeah.
That's just...
Well, if all this other is for real, yeah.
I think Mr. Norris has filled in multiple calls. He's got multiple clients looking at this area. We meet pretty frequently and look at what we need to do or what's being asked, just make sure we can accommodate it as best we can. I don't want you to think, oh, we've got to do all this at one time. That's not the way this works. It's, you know, how do you eat an apple? One bite at a time. We just got to tackle it as we come to it, but we need to have a roadmap of where we're going.
Yeah. I don't know why we don't have one already, but, um, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land.
I mean, I think that, a couple of things here. I think that, number one, hats off to Mr. Norris. I think he's working his tail off and brought in some, or bringing in some stuff that faster than it probably was anticipated. So, we've outgrown our infrastructure faster than we thought, but guys, I don't want to be pessimistic, but we've got to find some money.
Well, I was going to bring this up when you got finished, but at some point here, and for all the meetings I've been to and all the developers I've talked to, and there's a great interest in this site, and at some point, you're going to come to the realization that maybe free money ain't the only way you're going to get this done.
Yeah.
And it's just going to be, how quick do you want it to happen? But this is just going to be such a big, a big thing for this county is the tax revenue alone, from what you can accomplish here, will more than pay for anything you need to do out there.
Your return will be short.
Well, we're always there to help, you know, staff. There are options out there. Certainly, free money is always accepted, but when you're dealing with utilities, there are other avenues for funding. It ends up being a loan, but it can be low interest. There are some principal forgiveness and some of that stuff. You won't know until you make the application, but if you're running the utility, you run the utility for it to pay for itself, so you basically, you work that budget into your fee structure so that, you know, the users are paying that bill.
Like you said a while ago, you build it and they will come, but you've got to build it. I mean, you've got to get, there are certain pieces of this that has to be done now.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I think that, I think, and I don't know about, you know, for you other guys, but I know that, you know, when I was running for office, you heard about jobs for our young people, you heard about, you know, better parks, better roads, better everything. Well, this is building your abhorrent tax base. This is building indirectly, you can't put the dollars on your return on your investments as far as the houses that these employees will buy, the cars that they'll buy, the restaurants, the meals. I mean, and we're going to grow. That's inevitable. I mean, this county is primed geographically due to I-75, I-10 corridor, and, you know, most everybody I talked to was all about growth, as long as it was in any of those interchanges in their backyard. Nobody wants it in their backyard, right? Well, this is at interchange in the Catalyst site for a long time, and I think you're right, Mr. Chairman. I mean, if we build it, they're coming.
Well, and, you know, just talking to some of them, Florida's like a glass. It's filling up from the bottom to the top, and I don't know, Mr. Norris can speak to it, too. A lot of these meetings you go to and economic development meetings, and you're talking to all these people, and there's just limited sites left in Florida. There just is. We're the last frontier, as Mr. Norris would say, but it is the case, and I just, I don't know. I just, it'll just be such a great thing for this county. I know it's going to take a little while, and it's going to take whatever you can do to get it done, but I think this county will be much better off for it in the long run.
Well, back to what Commissioner Land asked, probably our next thing that's going to have to be addressed is the wastewater side of things once we get Project Wave squared away. I think there's some commitments out there for that in the future as well, so that'll be our next hurdle we've got to cross as far as that goes. Now, I'm not saying we're not going to have others in between there, but that's definitely something that's going to have to be addressed. Just kind of, I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but the legislature has been making it very difficult to put septic tanks in. They're making it more difficult. There's more legislation being proposed this session to make it more difficult, and, you know, it's typically not, you know, for large users, that's not an option anyway, but just to kind of, you know, put it in perspective, they're just making it more and more difficult. They're, they're, not said it publicly, but my opinion is, it appears their goal is to basically do a lay of septic tanks in State Florida. So...
Any other questions, Mr. Bailey, on this?
No, sir.
Mr. Norris, you've got something to say on this?
Yeah, just so that we're clear, this, you know, what we're looking at is just, we're trying to think about the future and where we're going, and we're working on a lot of different things. A lot of the stuff on this map, they're just possible, okay? I don't want you guys to think that where the little dots are means that this is definite. Some of them are closer than others, but we work on lots of different things, and so don't, you know, I don't want you coming away thinking that. And with Mr. Bailey and with Tori, you know, all we're trying to do is look down the road, like you talked about, the road, One Hundred and Sixty-Ninth, what's going to happen there, working with DOT in the future. We know that's a huge issue, so it may be in five years that we've got to do something there. This is just an idea to, so that we need a master plan, right? So that we know what we're doing, and then we'll take one piece at the time, and if that first piece is a water line or, you know, a wastewater plant or improving a road, this is long-term, but if we don't start, we're never going to get there. So, this, and like I say, a lot of the stuff that you see is, I mean, we don't, it's not that we own all those properties, it's just that as you look five, 10 years down the road, you can clearly see as people move this way and things happen that we should be giving that some thought so we don't, you know, we don't get caught behind the eight ball. So, this, all this is not happening tomorrow, and like I say, a lot of that stuff up there is not even in the county's possession at all. We're just asking these guys to give us their vision of what they think it may look like later. So, I just want to, you know, be sure that everybody understands that. This is just kind of us...
Prepared for the future.
Just looking at the future and seeing the best way to do it. I mean, we don't even have a plan for all this, right? We've still, we've got to do a whole master plan. So, this is just ideas, but we're just presenting ideas, so...
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Is that all you've got, Mr. Bailey?
All I have, unless y'all have anything else for me.
No, sir.
No, sir. Thank you all.
Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think that's great for the public to see. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Commissioner Perkins.
After hearing all that coming from Mr. Bailey and Tori and Mr. Norris, it seems like they're going to leave that be a workshop to be able to get some type of master plan to get this, what we need to do, because I agree with him on that tower, a lift tank to be able to get that water down to those areas versus using pumps. Pump propellers go out, and I've worked on those things while they were being made in Superbowl Pilgrim Bride, and a lift tank would be, certainly would be a lot better to, you know, supply that water down there with less problems, and so we need to get together to have some type of, after hearing all we're hearing tonight from them, to be able to get some type of plan or something for this.
Well, he's going to bring forward a task order for that, so we'll get to vote on that, and you'll see what it's going to cost to do that and what it involves, and so he'll be bringing that forward as a task order.
Mm-hmm. It means a lot out there. It'd be an undertake on, you know...
That's right. It's a big deal.
Yeah, yeah. It's our time now, so we need to address it.
Anybody else?
No, sir.
Item number seventeen, discuss with possible board action declaring a surplus, as surplus, a 1.10 acre parcel located on Two Hundred and Twentieth Pass and establishing a sale price. Mr. Scott.
Commissioners, we need to declare this parcel surplus and then get permission for an appraisal so we can move forward with getting that listed point in the future.
You just need a motion to...
Declare a surplus first and also the permission to get an appraisal.
Okay.
So, a motion by Commissioner Land to declare subject 1.1 acre parcel a surplus. Second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Also need a motion establishing as a surplus. We just did that, so you need a motion for...
For an appraisal.
For an appraisal.
Question on that?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Privat.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at the property appraisers card on this. The market value, he has it at eight thousand. It looks like the last sale was for twenty-six-four back in '06, which was the peak of the real estate boom. On a, this property potentially is going to appraise less than fifteen thousand dollars, I'd speculate.
Yes, sir.
So, is an appraisal necessary?
No, sir. Under either the county ordinance or the state ordinance for, you know, the surplus, if it is appraised by the county property appraiser at less than fifteen, you don't have to have an appraisal. You can use your best judgment.
Would, I haven't been in the real estate practice for quite some time, so would it be acceptable for us to ask for, like, a broker's price opinion at a much cheaper fee than... cheaper fee than the set the price?
The agreement that you have with the, the current, um, you know, broker, I mean, we can go just simply talk to them and see how they, they would go about putting this one out. You know, for the, for the particular piece of property, this may be one, instead of utilizing that process, that this is the process, you take it to the courthouse steps and, you know, and sell it like that.
Yeah, so could we ask our broker, hey, what do you recommend us putting, you know, what's recommended value of this property? And if they say it's south of 15, then they come back to the board and.
I'll, I'll be happy to have that discussion with them and, uh, bring back that information to you at the next board meet.
Well, seeing where that's located and knowing the area, 'cause it's kinda down in my district, I'd say that's when you wanna sell at the courthouse steps.
The particular piece, I mean, was lost because of taxes.
Yeah.
On it, so.
So can we just ask for that?
There's a different person, you know, process, you know, that you can use too. If you make, under the, under our regular county ordinance, um, if it's less than $15,000, but because of the nature of the piece of property itself, if it can only be utilized by one of the, the other neighbors, you know, around that, remember we did that over in the western end of the county? If it's only, could be utilized by them, what we can do is then, you know, um, contact each of the individual owners that have adjacent property to it and ask if they would be interested in the bid process for them to purchase the property instead of going through the other machinations. Mr. Wainwright, we really like that process.
Um, well, that was my next question, is, is, is it permissible for residential use due to its size?
Is it non-conforming?
Is it non-conforming?
No, sir, because the subdivision that it's in, it actually consists of lots one through six and then 25 and 26. It's eight lots in an old, old 1920s subdivision. You know, so it's a little bitty lots and, even though it's only in a, you know, a little over an acre, it's a little bitty lots, you know.
I'm good with the chairman's recommendation, I just didn't really wanna spend 500 on a 8,000, $500 for an appraisal on 8,000.
Well, let's make it easy on everybody and sell it at the courthouse. That's my opinion. That's up to y'all.
But, Mr. Chairman, I think you just hit, I think I heard you say, but it falls underneath that, that dollar amount that it could be offered to adjacent.
Adjacent landowners?
Yes, sir. Again, if you're looking at it, you have to make that determination that we do realize it's, the property appraiser has it less than 15, that's requirement number one. Requirement number two is, y'all have to find that by the nature of the property and where it is and everything, that it's really not, of no value to somebody else other than one of those neighbors that, that's right there. And if you make that finding, then we can, you know, contact the neighbors and just have them bid on it.
Which I don't think that's gonna be the case, because it's got a, it's got a road that goes right to it.
Yeah, that was my next question, is it landlocked or whatever?
No.
It's, that's your, your district, if, if that's a process we can follow, if the board wants to offer it to the adjacent landowners first, if they have no interest in it, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Perkins.
Uh, at being this off at courthouse steps, how we bid it off, would there be a base bid on it?
I'm not sure on that, Mr. Privat.
Yes, sir, you can set a base bid, yes, sir.
Okay. So I mean, you're saying it's at $8,000 at, uh, here at the property appraisers, will you use that for a base bid on it?
Sure, we can set it at whatever we want.
Okay, it's still a base bid of 8,000.
So you wanna sell on the courthouse steps for the base of 8,000, minimum bid?
That's what he's saying, yes.
I'm good with that. Is it minimal? Minimum of 8,000?
Do you need a motion in that?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
So do.
I'll motion that this surplus property to be, uh, offered up as bid for a base bid of 8,000 at the courthouse steps.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Perkins, second by Commissioner Land, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimous, five zero. Are there any additional agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comments. Anyone wishing to speak? Sheriff.
Just real quick, Chairman and Commissioners, uh, just give you a little updater. Uh, I remember you remember last budget year, or bad, last budget year, you gave us some money for the, the life scan for physicals for my employees. And, uh, just last week, we finished up with, we had like 95 employees went through it all. About four of them had some underlying unknown health issues and all, uh, that they weren't aware of and all, and then through this life scan and so forth, they was aware of and so forth. And they referred them to their primary physician, you know, to get some further, you know, evaluation and so forth and all. Uh, and then there was some that had some, and some of the tests that come back, they was, you know, kinda in the, in the high-risk area, you know, so they would, here again, refer them to their, their physicians and so forth. But here again, just wanna thank y'all for doing that, you know, because, you know, like I say, especially them ones that, you know, if they hadn't get, got treated, you know, or didn't know about it, you know, it could lead to some other, some serious problems and all. And so that's, that's very, you know, thankful, you know, for them and so forth and all it. And plus, what it does for me as a, as a employer is that, you know, with my employees healthy, you know, and so forth, I don't have to worry about them taking off or going to the doctor and so and so forth and all. But here again, just wanna, uh, appreciate everything that y'all have done, uh, and giving us some money for that, so because it's been a, uh, you know, some of it could be, could be a life-saving incident, you know, with, for some of them, you know, so forth and all it. But in here again, and then some, we've got, uh, you know, hopefully we can do it again next year, because now we've got a baseline of, of where everybody's at and so forth, so they know, you know, where they're at. And if we take it next year, they will know if they're, if they're increasing or decreasing, you know, as far as their, their, their physical condition and so forth. But here again, uh, just thank y'all for allowing us to do that and all, and it's been a, it's been a, uh, like I said, it's basically a lifesaver for us on some of this stuff here. So thank y'all.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Any other comments? Any takers? I don't know what that means, but, uh. Uh, anybody else while we're, uh, seeing what that's about? Name and address for the record, please.
Excuse me, sir.
Name and address for the record.
I'm Glenn Byrd. I live over by 136 and I-75 at 7292 37th Road, Livock.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, first I have just a concern about, uh, a couple intersections and some lighting on the roads. Hopefully this is the right place to bring it up. Near my home over there on, uh, 136, where it's coming off of I-75, uh, heading west, at the base of the hill, they have it posted 55 mile an hour. And when you're coming off of 37th Road and/or 137, if somebody's coming over the top of that hill at 55, and a lot of people think that means 80, um, I mean, there's, there's been a couple of good crashes out there, and I've even had a couple of close calls, 'cause you can't see the vehicles coming over the top of that hill at 55, I mean, it's just too fast. I think the base of the hill needs to be dropped to 40 mile an hour, and when it gets close to the intersection of 137 and 136, then increase it, because that's for the safety of people. And I say, it's just, it's, the, the crest of the hill is just too close to that intersection. And then, uh, also, this new construction you got going on at 90 and 137 by the BNB, across, across from the BNB, you're putting in, uh, concrete, darn, broke my, broke my hand open. Um, the, uh, you're putting in concrete, uh, I guess, curbs right there, and especially when you're coming southbound, uh, the way it is, it's set up, it's just way too tight between the, for, for, even for a big truck, they're at that, between the, like, if one's sitting at the, the concrete curb and other guy's coming through, there's not a lot of space there, those curbs are too close. And if you're driving a vehicle like I have, uh, when I'm out running, um, it doesn't have any windows to look out behind. It's, it's, it's like a van or, and/or, or, and/or vans that don't have any windows that's to the, you know, behind the passenger side window. When you're sitting at that curb, you can't see the, the, uh, the traffic coming from Livock heading towards Lake City. It's a big, uh, it's, it's a big, unless you get familiar with it, you, usually with a, a vehicle with panels, you pull up to the intersection, you have to turn a little bit in whichever, to the right to see stuff, that, that the road, 'cause that road's not totally squared, it's coming at an angle. And so, that's gonna be a problem. That curb on the, on the, on the one that's going southbound needs to be cut back a few feet and allow vehicles that, uh, have blind spots to see oncoming traffic. Um, and then one other thing is, uh, I do have night blindness, and when lights hit my eyes in such a way when I'm driving, it actually blinds me, and I can't see the road. And when you're heading again northbound on 137 at the, uh, the trash site, the way that road curves, uh, when you're going, if you, like I said, if you have a vision problem, um, the, the light blinds you. The light's just too bright. I mean, they, and Swannie Valley does have another, you can install a light there with lower wattage, because I, I've had it done myself.
You're talking about at the collection site?
I'm sorry, sir?
At the garbage collection site? Is, is that where you're talking about, the light's too bright?
The, the light at the dump site?
Yes, sir. Okay.
Yeah, the one that's, uh, at night, they light that trash site up, I guess I don't want people going in there and stealing their trash. But they, uh, they got that, the light's just too, too bright. If you, if you bring it down to the lower wattage, um, it, it won't blind people with somewhat of a vision problem at that corner. And, um, and I, I know they're, and they, I know it's available. So I would consider, uh, you know, just, I mean, a lower, a lower light will light up that area without blinding drivers. So, all right, that's my traffic issue. Now, if you don't mind, I do have another issue. And I'm just gonna make it quick. May I hand out a few items?
Yes, sir. Can I ask how long you think this is going to take?
I hope it, uh, the longest part's probably gonna be handing it out.
Are you handing it out to everybody, or what are we doing?
No, it's not, well, there's too many people, I didn't make that many, so I'm gonna just hand it out, and like, couples will get one, which is gonna be.
Well, how about let's, how about let's just keep it to the board?
And you can offer it to the public.
Yeah, you can, you can offer it, let them, let them deal with that.
Anybody, the public wants one, can get, get one from you afterwards.
Okay.
That saves some time.
Okay, I'm gonna add some to the board though, how many we got?
Um, Mr. White, while you're sitting, not, not that white, it's that white. Didn't you guys just have a, a traffic accident at this 137, 136?
Yeah.
Was that just, yeah, do you think the speed limit thing is, needs to be looked at that he just talked about? Is that, was that, was that the reason for the traffic crash?
I don't know, I wasn't the one seeing, but I do understand what you're saying. You're responding to that, going to the interstate.
Hmm.
Scott.
Okay. Maybe we've asked Mr. Scott to look at reducing that? Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
I get, Mr.?
That way, I'm gonna think my two.
Greg. Maybe slow it down some?
Come on, that hill, they're coming over.
Yeah, coming down ain't coming up, that I think, is what he's talking about. I know they, I think they just had a.
Even if you're pulling out from, from 136A there.
Yeah.
They come up quick and they're coming down.
They are, they roll through there pretty quick.
There, I got one more to hand you off.
Thanks, sir. Hey, let me, let me do that. Let me have you do this.
There's, uh, this one, then there's just a single behind.
Okay, I got it.
And, Mr. Byrd, this looks pretty extensive. How, how, I'm, I don't, I don't wanna cut you short, but I don't wanna.
Maybe a one minute.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
I only made two of these, so. Okay, it's gonna be quick. Okay. Okay, this has to do with a piece of land that was purchased over by 137 and 136 by a company called NCYT. Pretending to this handout, I would like to break it down and explain my issue with this. I don't know if any of you are aware, I have been involved in a lawsuit with Ronald Adams of, uh, N, of Ned Site. I have been to a couple of commission meetings, and I was very angry. I would like to let the members know that I apologize for my actions and if I upset any citizens. I was angry because I was lied to by Building and Zoning and Randy Harris concerning the planning of the infrastructure that was planning, that they were planning at that area. I asked Ronald Meeks about September 2017, May 2018, April 2019, if the county was planning any land use changes or developments concerning that particular area. Each time, Meeks said no. On March 31st, I asked Ha, I, I met with Mr. Harris on the properties. I asked Mr. Harris, Harris, if, if there was anything going on out there or land changes or, or, uh, land use, and Harris said no. Then Harris intimidated me, encouraged me, and, and, and to a land sale of, of a contract of, of 11.3 acres that I own at that site. You will read, you will read where the judge finds, even mentions that Adams, Harris, Privat, and Meeks were less than honest and changed their stories and testimonies several times. The county is supposed to be transparent. This group was seriously not transparent at any time with any questions, keeping me blind to the fact that infrastructure had been being, was being planned for that area. In fact, the county had received a multimillion dollar grant for that, from the state for, to commence with the infrastructure. As to the, as to the contract, there's a, there's a check. As to the, as to the contract, there's a, there's a check and a contract in there showing this. As to the contract, the deposit was not deposited within 48 hours, which is required by the contract. It was in fact 15 days late. I have been, I have the banking trail to show this and you'll get it. On the bottom of the contract, Ronald Adams was to sign this contract. The signature does not, does say Ronald Adams. However, I proved that it was in fact Randy Harris that signed the Ronald Adams name. I was not informed of this action. In fact, they had lied to me several times concerning this during testimonies. Had, we had to investigate the signature and in the end, proved and verified that Randy Harris signed the contract for Ronald Adams. Judge Fenn, for some reason, accepted all of these lies and deceptions and truth awarded Adams this property. I think this decision is totally and absolutely the wrong decision. If anybody feels that I was possibly wrong by the, by the county and by N-Site, I ask for you to give me some voice, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lane.
Mr. Bird. I got a question for you, before you leave. This paper that you handed out to all of us, it states here, March, in March of 2019 is when Mr. Harris met you on your property?
Yes.
And he met you to discuss buying it?
Sorry, sir?
He met you to discuss buying your property?
I asked him to come out and inform me of any land use changes or why people were being interested in that area. And so, I just wanted information and as we talked, he brought it to the, going to sell thing. He did raise some prices and such and we both talked about it. But I was, I was not knowledgeable of infrastructure company. I'm just going to be the way it is.
But, Mr. Harris came to you on behalf of N-Site and Ronald Adams in March of 2019?
Well, I didn't know that. I figured Mr. Harris.
At the time, you didn't know it?
Yeah, but I figured I was talking to the county manager. I, I did not, I found out later with time and with investigations that in fact, Mr. Harris was working as a, you know, he was working basically to obtain lands for N-Site.
Okay. And, oh, your mic was off.
Oh, I hope everybody's hearing me then.
I'm trying to get my head wrapped around this really quickly. So, Mr. Harris, in testimony, you said that he signed Mr. Adams's name to the real estate contract to buy your property?
He denied that for probably, we kind of figured it out as, as it was coming to trial. I mean, we only had like about six months. We've, we've been in a lawsuit since, since mid 2019 and it's been getting dragged on, got dragged on through the ethics committee thing and which they let it go dead during that time. They didn't want, I guess, didn't want that book to be opened. But, the problem is, is that we did not, we, me and my attorney was, on a Sunday, was just going back through records and he just happened to come across a check that is in this pile that has Ronald Adams's name on it. I mean, his, now that's Ronald Adams's signature on the check. But if you look at the signature on the contract, it's no way Ronald Adams. And eventually, we did get Mr. Harris to, after several back and forth lying, changing things on their part, he finally, they finally, it did finally come out that it was in fact, Mr. Harris that signed Ronald Adams's name.
So, he admitted that he signed Mr. Adams's name to buy your property?
In the final testimonies, yeah.
So, who was, who was the attorney for Mr. Adams?
Well, at one time, in the beginning, it was Mr. Privat. He was on it for, for several months. I, I believe he was on it through the ethics issue.
That was in March of 2019?
He was, he was, well, he, we didn't know he was involved until we, until they filed suits, but I think was around June or so. It was like mid-year 2019.
And?
And then it, and, and at first, for the first couple of months, we did not realize who we were dealing with. Because I hired a local, I hired a local attorney team and the, it came up that, I went out and talked to an appraiser and he said that he was familiar with the people involved, you know, that he didn't know they were involved, but he was familiar with them and he knew Mr. Privat.
So, that was, that was all in early 2019? And in September of 2019, board members is when we bought the fire station property. And that is when Mr. Privat prepared the option to purchase agreement on behalf of the county in Randy's personal name, in which N-Site ended up with the front piece at a later date. Now, I'm just going to cut to the chase. Mr. Privat, at what time, in 2019 or 2020? Or in 2020, when Mr. Adams was here for the zoning change, at what time did you notify the board of county commissioners that Mr. Adams was your client? Mr. Privat?
Mr. Harris, who I reported to at that time, knew that. But if you, what you're talking about, the zoning change in that first meeting, is you're talking about, there's two separate items there. Mr. NSYNC, the company, was being represented before the board by Mr. Tim Alcorn on that land use matter. I happened to be for, for a month after that period of time, still counsel for Mr. Adams in his suit before I withdrew, you know, how that crossed over during that period of time. But I was not representing N-Site at that time.
No, you weren't, but during that meeting, you gave us counsel about, because I remember I asked a question about is this spot zoning? And you gave me your legal advice at that time.
That was on behalf of the county, that would have been my opinion. That's correct. We were, I was representing county.
But during that meeting at that time, not that it would have mattered, maybe, maybe not, but wouldn't, shouldn't it have been knowledge to the board that Mr. Adams was your client?
Mr. Adams was not the one making the application to the county.
But he was the property owner?
His, that corporation was the property owner.
In which Adams is the sole owner? Huh.
May I say that that's all that's listed on the state corporate SunBiz site? It just doesn't show any other officers.
I, I don't know what else to say.
So, Mr. Bird, why are you here? What, what is it that you're, you're after here? I mean, you came up here, you gave a presentation. I'm at a little loss here of.
To bring attention to the board, that, I, I was familiar with the Cobble incident, with the, you know, whenever they did that land deal on 129. I happened to be a friend of Mr. Cobble and I actually found out about that way before the board ever did. And me and Mr. Cobble talked about it several times. And anyways, he, he was supposed to, he was, he was set to come in and make it very public as to what happened to him and for some reason, he didn't show up. He was supposed to, he'd been talking to authorities and he was supposed to do, well, you have to get that from Brian maybe, but he, anyways, he backed off and I see something here where the county was acting outside of the guidelines. They're supposed to be transparent. There was no transparency. I was being lied to whenever I went in to ask questions about my property. I was not being told about infrastructure coming, which makes a very serious deal in the, in the value of the property. So, they were being less than honest and.
Well, and I understand that. I understand where you're coming from and I get all that. But I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to draw the focus in it to what it is you're really here for, what you want to do, what you want us to do.
Trying to let these people know that there was, there was a problem in the county board at that time. As far as I'm concerned, there still is.
Which is, what's the problem? Which is, the problem is?
Well, Mr. Privat was involved deeply. And I mean, when, when the county's supposed to be acting on the behalf of the people, which I'm considering myself one of the people and I'm not being told the truth by the people that run the county, which, you know, is not, I'm not pointing the finger at too many people, not really anybody else on the board, but I am saying that Mr. Privat was involved pretty deeply.
So, you had, y'all had a, you filed a lawsuit?
Pardon me?
You filed a lawsuit?
They filed a lawsuit.
I'm a little bit familiar. I have read the, and Mr. Privat can correct me if I'm wrong, as he was the attorney of record all the way up until, I believe, Mr. Privat filed a motion to withdraw as counsel for Ronald Adams on December the 20th of 2020, after the fire station issue came about. But prior to that, he was the attorney of record for Mr. Adams. What happened, Mr. Bird, correct me if I'm wrong. I've heard a little bit of your story from bits and pieces from other people, but you're here now and we're talking about it. Mr. Harris got a contract to buy your 11 acres that adjoins what used to be the Harold Fuel Truck Stop property, which is, was at the time owned by N-Site, Ronald Adams, right?
The front property?
You changed your mind, you changed your mind after you signed it and decided, I'm summarizing here, you didn't want to sell it and at that point, that's where Privat came in and sued you to make, to try to force a sale. Because Mr. Adams said, no, I'm not, I'm not letting you out of this. You're going to sell me your property. That's where Privat came in.
Well, I have anxiety and, and depression issues seriously. So, whenever I'm being confronted by things such as the county manager telling me that the property, because it's been blocked in by N-Site, is, is never going to be worth anything and, and he even stomped his foot in the ground on it, doing like this. You know, your property is, you know, hitting my dirt. Said, your property is never going to be worth anything and you're going to be stuck back here. And the thing that made me back out of it, I mean, first I backed out before, on Sunday, the day he was there. And then I, my anxiety and my depression kicked in and I went back in. But then very shortly after that, I called Mr. Privat and told him I didn't want to sell it. And I've read the contract the way it was. It said it'd be in writing. So, a couple of days later, I did do it in writing. By then, it was like seven days in. But the thing is, is that I changed my mind and that was because I tried to send a, a property appraiser out there. And he's, basically somebody I know. I mean, I, I know him, but anyways, like, he went over and he said, well, I know some of the stuff in the county. I do some work for them. And this information would probably go through Mr. Privat, so I'll go over and talk to him. And that was like on the second or third day. And he went over, talked to Mr. Privat and he came back to me and said, I'm not willing to, to appraise your property. And it's like, why not? He said, well, I'm just not, after, this is after talking to Mr. Privat. And in one of our conversations, Mr. Privat even laughed at me and said, you know, you, oh, he said, don't depend on, don't, don't depend on any help from Chase.
Chase was the appraiser?
Pardon me?
Chase was the appraiser?
Yes. And he laughed at me. He said, don't, don't expect any help from Chase. And, but before that, I mean, whenever I was being lied to in the early stages, I was thinking, I started figuring out that something was not right and I decided to back out early, which was before even the deposit was there. According to the contract, it should have been there within 48 hours. I have a paper trail in here that shows that it was not deposited until the 17th of the month. So, it was even, it was 15 days late, which is way past even the time that I backed out.
Well, with that being said, how, how did the lawsuit turn out?
Mr. Finn, or Judge Fenn, unfortunately, he leaned their way. I'm kind of dumbfounded and baffled about it.
He ruled against you.
Yeah, he ruled against me. But like I said, with all the lies and, I mean, he, he even said in his, I included his test, the judge, I forget what they call it, but whenever he makes a decision, he speaks about why he's making that decision. He even mentions in there about the dishonesties and the, the way that they went back and forth and changed their stories several times. And, and the check was, like I said, he mentioned the check wasn't there on time, but he, but anyways, for some reason, he allowed that portion of the contract to be dismissed in his court. And it's like, you know, why can't, why can you do that? The court, the contract says 48 hours and this, this actually is not about money for me. When I started this, it was for the people. Because when I started saying that some of the people that is helping to run my county is not being honest with the citizen, there's a problem. Especially whenever they're taking things that belong to somebody that works for a living. They work hard, they sweat to get what they got. And then they come in and they basically coerce you, intimidate you, because he, I mean, it's, when you're just a working guy like me and I'm standing there two feet from the county manager and he's basically degrading my situation and lying to me about infrastructure coming. I mean, to get, and he's working, then, then later, like it's probably a couple of years later before we finally figured out, hey, this guy's working for N-Site. And, and the judge even said that in there. That he, that, that, because Mr. Harris was the one that was, when it comes to like Mr. Wainwright coming out there and clearing, Mr. Harris was the one that was making the decisions.
Mr. Bird, Commissioner, Mr. Bird. I appreciate you coming. I'm going to, I'm going to read a little short excerpt, if you will, Mr. Chairman. I believe this is Judge Fenn's ruling.
Is this in those packets?
It is. It's in this, I found it in this one with the picture that says Tri-County. It's in this one.
Oh, okay.
I found what he was talking about. I don't know what page it's on. But on page two of the court document, it says here, "Mr. Bird, I want you to understand that this ain't a courtroom. I appreciate you coming and shedding some light on your issue that involves at the time, two county employees with you. This case was ruled on on December the 8th of 2022. Judge Fenn says right here, the first issue however is, was there a contract? And again, I found this the evidence to support or not support this to be troubling, to me anyway. The problems that I saw with this are, Mr. Harris claimed in his testimony to only be acquaintance of Mr. Adams and not his agent, just nothing more than a facilitator. Yet the evidence, as I heard it, was that he had full authority, he being Harris, had full authority to handle a sales contract of a substantial amount. Despite his testimony, I think the evidence is quite to the contrary, that he was clearly acting as an agent for Mr. Adams. And this is evidenced by the fact that he had, and this is evidenced by the fact that he had the authority to sign his name to a contract and to at least fill out a good portion of a check that Mr. Adams entrusted him to take with him to meet with the defendant. The authority to sign, I'm skipping over, the authority to sign someone's name to a contract and a check is clearly well beyond somebody that's an acquaintance and a facilitator. There were numerous efforts in my mind that between the plaintiff and Mr. Harris, there were certainly some problems with the authenticity of the document, the sales contract itself, the signature especially. And the deposition testimony inconsistent with the trial testimony and efforts to get that straight were very troubling to the court. And then the, I guess the rationale was that it was something that was forgotten. And that goes beyond, in my opinion, goes beyond. And that goes beyond, in my opinion, goes beyond common sense, that someone would forget the fact that they authorized somebody else to sign their name to a real estate agreement and even possibly a check, which begs to mind, I guess, how many other deals were facilitated in Mr. Harris's terms between Mr. Adams and Mr. Harris? The initial concern arose here when Mr. Wainwright tells Mr. Byrd to call Mr. Harris when he's concerned about the land clearing efforts on the piece of property adjoining Mr. Byrd's property. And why, it begs, my question is, why in the world would Mr. Wainwright, who was hired to clear land, ask or direct Mr. Byrd to call Mr. Harris and not the landowner? That indicates, again, there was more than a facilitator relationship. There's an agency relationship. So I'm not going to read all this. It's, I think it's public record over at the clerk's office now. I do find it very troubling. I'm just going to leave it at that. I appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me. It's been a nightmare in my life for, since 2019. I've been living a nightmare.
Understand.
And if things go like this, like it is with Judge Finn making his decision, my nightmare is going to get worse, because now they're going to be back. My, my house is only 100 yards from there. They're going to be in my backyard. They already are a couple hundred yards out on, out on the highway. But if they move in over there, they're going to be at my back door.
Understood. Thank you, sir. Moving on, is there any other public comment? Seeing none, moving along. Mr. Scott, administrators' comments?
Just a couple of things.
I do have copies. I don't have for everybody. I've got like a couple of copies. I think I can take care of most of you that's prepared down. A couple of you, one copy.
Excuse me, Mr. Byrd, he's got copies of all this, if anybody wants it, so you can see him after the meeting if you want a copy? Thank you.
Just wanted to give you an update. We, I mentioned last time about some concerns we had at landfill, some, some maintenance issues. We've got pumps for leachate tanks and making some progress there. The, but anyway, we're working on that. Also, we are doing some research on utilities, looking at, trying to get some help from Florida Rule Water or others to try to help us work on a game plan for some of these utilities that's coming, maybe do some fine tuning of what we already have, but, you know, got a lot in front of us on these, the cattle site utilities, so we want to get ahead of that. But that's really all I've got tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for making your approval tonight for the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Mr. Privat, anything?
Nothing.
Mr. Perkins, Chairman?
No, I think it was a great success on the evening night. Very interesting, and so everybody get on safely.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations again to Swan Valley Electric and Rapid Fiber on that $10 million grants that they got. I think that having Mr. Bailey come and do a presentation like that for all of us to hear at one time is transparency, and I'm sure the public appreciates that as well, on what, what we got going. So thank y'all for coming.
Everybody up to date?
Well, I had a 30-minute speech, but I got to go to the bathroom, so I just need a motion to dismiss. I'm sorry, I thought you was done.
No, I was just, real quick, it's real quick. I just want to say, and I think we all kind of talked about it, but thank you to our employees. I mean, and it's, I know this sounds silly, but it says, we, we take it for granted, but, you know, a dead deer carcass in someone's driveway, you don't realize, not all of us had the means to remove that and to get it going. I know we would go out there, move it, dig a hole, whatever. These folks didn't have that, but our folks went out there and just take care of business. And I just appreciate that. I really do. Thank them.
Well, I, I just got to say this. A great ag teacher of mine, Mr. Willie Veal, passed away. I don't know when it was, it's been three or four weeks ago, maybe longer, but they had a memorial service for him Saturday down in Branford, and just a huge, to show you how much a guy really makes a difference in people's lives, how many people was there that was taught by this man, and, and I still use a lot of what he taught me today, so it was just a great thing, and... And I just want, am I hearing somebody?
There's somebody out there.
But I won't keep it long. I want to say congratulations to Swan Valley Electric on their, their getting the grant money that they needed, and I guess that's just about it, because I'm about to die, so I just need a motion to dismiss.
Well, hold on a minute, let's, uh...
I'm going to bang this gavel anyway.
I'll make a motion, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Mr. Perkins, all in favor, aye?